Anybody choose to make any public comment at this point? Hearing none and sensing none. Presentation and our resolution items, presentation by the Computer Center on preparing paperless agendas.
I'm just gonna take the time to go over a brief presentation that we prepared on the electronic agenda. I know it's not showing on your screens. Is it showing now?
No.
Okay, it is showing on the screens. I know earlier it wasn't showing on there. Kind of titled it here, Electronic Agenda for Cameron County. Some of the goals we set forth, we'll go ahead and to reduce the use of paper and of course, reduce the cost. We also want to reduce time that we spend in creating the agenda. We want to take it to an automated process. We want to incorporate new technology and we want to eliminate the time it takes for travel by switching it to an electronic delivery and of course, increase the accessibility of the agenda information. Some of the information that we looked at, that we've been researching, there are many, many software programs out there. As you can see, the two that we've kind of narrowed it down to, which are the most, that we've kind of seen would be the most user-friendly, would be the Quick Agenda. The Quick Agenda is currently actually being used by Hidalgo County. So I wanted to show that, that that's what our, one of our neighboring counties is using. Novus Agenda is another one that also was, kind of stood out. It's also pretty user-friendly. And of course, there are other various software packages that are also being used. Right now, Joe, the Computer Center Supervisor, is at the IT conference in Austin and he has touched base with me and he is gathering more information on other programs for electrical Something to take into consideration in moving forward with an electronic agenda would be the hardware and the software. In having an electronic agenda, it will require the use of a scanner. My recommendation would be that some of the departments either acquire a scanner or get it one centralized scanner for the use of an electronic agenda in basically scanning any attachments to the agenda form and submitting it in an electronic fashion. The other thing would be that we must be able to scan everything into a, into one acceptable format. My recommendation would be a PDF format. And by using the PDF format, it allows us to actually bookmark and to use it as a quick reference and using Adobe Reader. Also, a recommendation would be to get some laptops or computers that you all will be able to use to see the electronic agenda. We've taken into consideration actually purchasing versus actually building some software. If we purchase the program, of course, it will allow for a quicker incorporation. We'll be able to use it as ready to go. Ready to use, we shouldn't have any problems with it. However, if we do purchase a program, we might not be able to modify the current program. In other words, we're not going to be able to use what we're currently using, which you all are currently seeing as far as the agenda form. That might change a little bit. So we're kind of shying away from that and trying to actually create something on our own, incorporate a few ideas and hopefully, we can modify that to where we can actually create something. If we do create something, it will take some commitment from our IT staff. We will have to assign someone specifically to that project to where they can detail it and design it. There is a cost analysis that I put together. If we do initial cost, if we purchase the software, we're looking at probably about $30,000. That's excluding software license and a new server that we'll need to run the existing program. We'll also have the reoccurring annual maintenance fees. Again, some departments will have unexpected purchases, for example, a scanner or upgrading. Some departments currently have copy machines that have the scanning capability. They just need to enable that. So that's probably another added feature they'd have to put on their maintenance agreement with either whoever they're currently using, Xerox. And of course, we would need the training that would be needed for all the departments in moving forward this. If we would create it, we would purchase Adobe Acrobat Professional and their licenses. We would also, of course, spend some time in customizing it and just like the other one, if we purchased it, we would have the unexpected costs for scanners and equipment or upgrades and of course, the training that would be needed for the departments. I was gonna show a quick, a quick little demo that we had from Agenda Quick. I'm gonna skip over that. My recommendations to the court, in order to keep the cost down and to meet our desired goals, was, is to scan and organize it into an agenda as a working process, as a working document. So the person that would be in charge of actually working with the agenda, they would keep an open file and receive these files electronically as they would come in, download them into the Adobe Reader, the Adobe Professional, and keep working them as they come in. We would use Adobe Professional to create an agenda binder. The binder would actually keep track of all the incoming documents and put them in order for that person to use. We would keep the current format, which is PDF. As the, as the items are added, supplemental information can be attached to them, which is fairly easy. Another recommendation would be to have paper copies routed as normal. That way, we would have an original copy, but instead of making copies like we currently do, we reduce the amount of copies to just one. And of course, we would need to provide the adequate training to all the departments. We would want to create a standard operating procedure as far as distributing it to everyone and following those procedures into the agendas. Hopefully, there won't be any, any problems, but it'll take some time for everybody to get used to the process. And that was, that was it of the presentation. But if anyone has any questions, please.
Are there any issues with the county clerk's office in regards to electronic agendas?
Not that I'm aware of, and I haven't really touched base. I haven't gone that far yet, Commissioner, to meet either with Joe or Edan in reference to that. As far as having the original papers signed and stamped, that's kind of why we wanted to keep that process the same, as far as not having any conflicts with the county clerk's office.
Because it's gonna be a little more work to route the normal paper also along, I mean, the agenda can easily be scanned.
Yes.
But it's gonna create a little more work for someone with the paperwork associated with it.
It would be right. Taking that agenda like they would walk it through, get the normal signatures, and then either they take it back to their office for scanning would be my recommendation. That way, alleviate the county administrator's office of them having to actually scan those individual documents. And those are little small details that we're still kind of into trying to fine tune. But if that person gets the original signatures, then walks it back to their office for scanning or keeps a copy for themselves would be my recommendation and then scan that copy and deliver the other copy as they normally do, then it would, the person actually wouldn't have to bring the 13 copies that are required.
Do you have any idea what the reoccurring annual maintenance cost would be?
Not, not at this time, no, Commissioner. It'll vary depending on, you know, different situations of we actually, what we want them to do. I mean, it just, it just varies and we haven't gone to that far depending. We're trying to narrow it down as to which software, which company we would go with and then it would provide the maintenance costs. We are, we are trying to look for something to build in-house versus actually having to go out and purchase a program.
Have you done a survey or to find out which departments will have costs and which, because I see we're saying some departments will have unplanned purchase of scanning equipment.
And those would be the-
Did you keep that in your presentation and I missed it?
I'm sorry?
Did you give us an idea how many departments would have that?
No, currently, we don't know. I'm thinking, I know there's a handful of departments that actually do have scanners and there are individual employees that have scanners in their office, but I'm thinking those departments that, the bigger departments that might not have a scanner, which I don't know who those are at this time, no, Commissioner. We can definitely, you know, find out.
I would be interested in knowing and also what the cost would be.
Okay, definitely.
I would think that at this point, I think you're trying to get a feel for what the court really wants to do and if, if there's a consensus on the court, hey, go ahead and move forward and do this.
Yes, Judge.
Then you can start compiling, you know, what the cost is gonna be. I know that, I saw the $30,000 number.
Yes.
And there's certain things that we're gonna have to do, whether we, we outsource or buy something off the shelf or we do it in-house. There's gonna be some fixed costs that we're gonna have no matter what, in terms of scanners, et cetera. So I think at this point, you just want a consensus maybe from the court to go to the next step, to find out and really start comparing apples to apples to how much this whole process is gonna cost. And again, it's something that we're gonna work into over the next three to five months, right?
Correct, Judge.
And then maybe once you have those numbers that addresses Commissioner Tomayo's concerns, anybody else's as far, you know, because a lot of these departments already have scanners.
Yes.
And, and a lot of the, a lot of the fax machines that are already in place have scanners. A lot of our, of our copy machines already have scanning capabilities, so.
Right.
But I think you need to go back in inventory, you know, with the district clerk, county clerk, all our major departments, health department, jail, et cetera, and see which ones they have. I think you're gonna find that most of the departments that we have already probably have some kind of scanning capability.
And a lot of the, a lot of the newer copy machines that come in, I know Xerox, they have the little button.
Right.
All you have to do is press scan, it'll scan it and it'll email it right to you. They just need to add that.
Right, right. So I guess the next step would be, I guess, go and try to determine exactly what, where we need to go after this. Today is just a little presentation.
Yes, Judge.
From my position, I think that you have a lot of entities that are going into paperless agendas.
Yes.
You could always, for the media, you can always do a hard copy for them if they need one.
Correct.
And, you know, I guess we're gonna have to go parallel agendas for a while, you know, something that's, that's on our laptop and also with a hard copy, you know, as parallel systems until-
We'll try to make it a smooth transition for everyone.
Real smooth. So I think, let me, let me hear a motion to acknowledge his, his report and I guess as a consensus would be just to continue forward in studying this issue.
Yes, Judge, absolutely.
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, signed by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate your work on this. I know some of us have been talking about this for at least five years in trying to get away from wasting all the paper we waste and cutting down all the trees we cut down in order to provide the agendas. This to me is really the way we ought to be going and I think we can be much more efficient this way.
I think, I did read a study and it's by the Independent School District, Katy Independent School District, by Houston, and their estimated costs they're saving, I think, close to $6,000 in just paper alone on just, by going to an electronic agenda. I mean, it's just, you know, it's a significant amount of money, but it is an actual cost savings.
I would just ask that you also look at the, you know, if, if we're looking at moving into this direction, that in the process of doing this, even utilizing the scanners, is there a way that we can electronically signature capture?
Yes.
To the program?
Yes.
Without a scanner?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, why, why are we going to the scanner? It's kind of like we're doing another step that we might not need to do.
Well, the, the only reason for the scanner is if you, if we're gonna do, we can do the actual agenda format electronically. And I know the city of Brownsville, we did visit with them last week and they showed us their process and they do everything over the Intranet, which is a tool, you know, that we're trying to develop here locally. We can create the format on a web-based, the agenda form on a web-based program to where it can be generated electronically and emailed.
It would seem that that would be the direction that we need to go, instead of like introducing another layer of technology with the, and the scanners work great.
Right.
But, you know, you don't use them that often.
And there are, there are those, there are those documents that do come in if we need to attach a contract. If we don't have it personally electronically-
Backup material.
A backup, we would, we would scan that document in-
Right.
And attach it as a supplement. That would be the only reason for a scanner.
Yeah.
I know nowadays, you know, everybody's sending contracts back and forth electronically, but if the court would require an actual document or a contract with signatures-
But most of the time, those have been digitalized and you can just email them.
And you can sign them, yes.
Because most of the documents that we get are email documents.
Yes.
Already.
Right.
So it would be an easy attachment to that.
Right, and we can definitely streamline, streamline the process and make it as cost, you know, cost efficient as possible. But the only, the only thing for the scanner would be if, if we would need to attach a supplement or, you know, or a document to there that is not electronically. That would be the only reason.
That would be scanned in.
And it would be scanned in and emailed as an attachment.
So the county clerk's office already has electronic filings?
They, there is, one of the programs that we're, that we have here, the Quick Agenda and the Novus, they both actually integrate that part of the, of the process. So I don't believe they actually have electronic agenda, not at the moment.
No, but, but yet, a lawyer can file a lawsuit electronically now.
Yes.
You know, I mean, so it's not any different.
But I think, isn't that in the district clerk's office though?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
That's part of the district clerk's office function though? I don't know how the lawyers deal with the filings in the county clerk's office as far as civil documents or anything like that.
Yeah, but I'm saying that the process is always in place. That's why sometimes some of these off-the-shelf programs already have all the built-in components.
Right.
You know?
Which the two that we were looking at actually do have that, where it incorporates the routing, the workflow process, you know, and it shoots out the, what I can do is I can email you all the link with a demo and it really, it really kind of shed some light on some of these. The only thing would be the cost associated with these packages.
Wonderful.
It's gonna cost one way or another, because you're gonna have staff working on the program.
Sure, absolutely.
You can't get around it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item three, consideration approval of resolution appointing a county representative to the public power pool and technical committee member. Pete, I think that we decided, no, we decided, it was Commissioner Tomayo that's on there?
No.
Or?
Aren't you on there?
No, this, I had been getting mail for Valencia, Commissioner Valencia, from these people and when I got it, I was like, well, it's not-
Well, the last one was Commissioner Valdez.
No, Valencia. I never got any address to Valdez. It was Valencia and I thought, well, it's not addressed to me, I'm not gonna open it, so I called Marty Ate at the time, he was with us. And he said, well, just, he says, oh, that has to be corrected and he said, just send all those letters to the judge's office. So I'd send them to the judge's office. I had no idea what it was.
Well, let's, it wasn't me. It wasn't my office, but I've never seen anything.
No, no, I said, yeah, I mean, when I first came on board.
Right, okay.
And, and so I would send them back.
Well, would you like, would you like to be appointed to, to represent the county on that?
They have your address already.
Just change it.
Well, I'll need a little bit of in-service, I sure wanna-
Because the resolution that, that you got to has had a resolution by the Commissioners' Court, appointing Richard Valdez.
Well, that was the last resolution that we found.
That's the last, right, that's the last resolution.
But evidently-
I'm not sure if that resolution ever got to them or not, from the county.
Okay.
I know the county passed it and signed it and everything, but if the address wasn't changed, then, then maybe it never got to them. But what this is, is the county belongs to this power pool and I'm not sure the number of facilities that we have under this pool. I've asked for a copy of that list from Mike Forbes, but from what I can tell you is that the contract ends at the end of December 2008. And I've had meetings with CPL representatives, because we do have a number of other facilities that are not covered by this pool, where we can save quite a bit of money by changing our category, the way we're categorized by CPL. And so that's an item that I'll bring to you all in the future. And then I'll also place another item to see if we want to continue in this pool or not, but for now, we, we do need to appoint, you know, one member from the court. And I'm not sure if they have meetings. Mike Forbes apparently was a technical committee member and he didn't know that, that he was, you know, such a member of that technical committee, so I don't know that the county-
Let me stop you right there. So even Mike didn't know?
Right. So I'm not sure that the county has ever participated in a meeting or, or conference calls. I'm not sure how they have their meetings. But there is additional information that I'm putting together that I need to come to the court and get some direction, you know, from the court. I've, I've got, we've gotten a copy of that contract, legal has it and they're reviewing it. And so in the next week or two, you know, we'll put an item back on the agenda. If the court wants to table this item, until I come back with that information, we can do that. Or if y'all want to appoint a member from the court, you know, we can do that too.
What would y'all like to do?
Well, we need both a representative and a technical committee member.
Exactly, both.
The representative appoints a technical committee member, if I understand this correctly, having looked into it. So if we appoint Commissioner Tomayo's representative, then she appoints a technical committee member, which Mike Forbes has been in the past, although he wasn't aware of it. Obviously, there's not a lot of communication with the technical committee member, with anyone.
Well, I can, I can tell you that no mail was ever received addressed to Commissioner Valdez. It was all addressed to-
Valencia.
Commissioner Valencia. So either they weren't keeping up with what was happening or this court never let them know. I, I had no idea.
Commissioner, would you, would you like to serve on that committee and then, and then appoint somebody to the technical committee? Would you like to do that? Or do you want to think about it for a week?
What would be the, I want some information.
I think it was an annual, if I remember correctly, when we voted on this years ago, it was an annual meeting in Galveston, once a year, you know, that, that the representative would go to.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do this? Why don't we table it for a week and try to get a little bit more information as to how many meetings there actually are, what, you know, what is it?
And also, I want to know what benefit the county will get from it, because I don't want to serve on a board just to serve on a board.
Yeah, well, he's gonna do that.
The benefit we get is we're in a pool to buy energy at a lower cost. We had a presentation brought to Commissioners' Court and the presentation was a public power pool. It's a pool of governmental entities that get together and buy energy.
Yeah, well-
And the energy that we get is at a lower cost than the normal rate.
Okay, well, I, I understand that process, Commissioner.
Well, and also-
But are, are we paying dues for this or, I mean, have we been a part of it?
No.
Yeah, we have been a part of it since I've been on the commission.
Also, what we're seeing in the, in the market out there is sometimes the other providers are able to be more competitive than perhaps they were at one time shortly after deregulation. And now they're, they're being more competitive in some cases than the public power pool is. I believe Westaco has pulled out of it, Harlingen's pulled out of it, several other people have pulled out of it because they're being able to get their power less expensively.
Yeah.
And I know what Pete's talking about, having some of our accounts being audited and being able to receive power less expensive may end up to a point of where we want to look at two or three options.
Other options.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is what I want to know. First of all, I want to know, is it going to help the county? Number one. And then number two, if it is, I'll be glad to serve, but I'll make more information as to what it is and then I'll be appointing a technical-
Okay, let me hear a motion to table the item until Pete comes back and then provide more information to the court. Moved by Commissioner Woods, I'm at Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item four, right after this item, we'll go to the supplemental item, which includes the mayor, South Padre Island, and the city manager. Item four, consideration adoption of resolution recognizing Balameno, Mr. Bietravino, being selected as a 2007 Texas Independent Automobile Dealers Quality Dealer of the Year. This item was submitted by Mr. Asagui. There's a resolution, I think, in your packet. If not, Alice is working on, on the one that we can sign if, if the court deems it proper to give him this resolution.
I don't have one.
No, this one I just got right now, that they're working on.
Can we pass this around, so we can read?
Do the news, Becky?
There's only one now.
We're saving on paper.
We're trying to go paperless.
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Benavides. I have a second by Commissioner Goss. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. If it's okay with the court, let me take the supplemental item out. Discussion and possible action regarding the early voting polling locations for the Democratic primary and Republican primary elections of March 4th, 2008 and setting compensation rates. As you all know, the court approved the locations last week, last Tuesday. Pete, this was placed on the agenda and somebody asked you to place it back on the agenda for further discussion?
Right, Commissioner Benavides called me on Friday with, apparently she had gotten some calls from the town of South Padre Island and the mayor and city manager here. So a supplemental agenda item for the court to have the opportunity to discuss the item and I guess hear from, from the mayor from South Padre Island.
Can we hear from Roger?
Yeah. Do we want to hear from Roger first or Mayor, do you want to do your plea? Roger? Because I think what happened last week, if I recall, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the island was, was, was an original early voting location last week and then it was removed and then it was replaced with the Brownie Park location. Is that in essence what happened or tell me different?
Yes, when I, when I brought the-
You sound better.
Commissioners, thank you. When, thank you very much. Yeah, when I brought the, the list of early voting locations for approval by Commissioners' Court, the South Padre Island location was one of the sites that was on that list. At that time, when Commissioners' Court entertained the, the setting of the locations for early voting, South Padre Island was, was omitted then from the list and the Brownie Park, the community center at Brownie Park Road, or Brownie Road was, was placed in there.
All right, so now we're back.
May I ask a question, Roger? That the term of that location was for the full term of early voting, right?
It was for a one week, it was a one-week location.
One-week location?
Yes, sir.
Only, not the full term?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor?
Judge, I'm really gonna let Dewey address this, but I did want to comment that I thought this had come up a year or two ago, kind of basically the same thing had happened and we had requested that we have early voting on the island for these kinds of elections. And we were told in words, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, so if I'm wrong, he can correct me, that, you know, there was a cost factor, I believe, and also being able to find the judges in order to work it. And if I recall correctly, the town was prepared to do both and supply both if we needed to. So that's kind of what I recall and so I was kind of surprised when this happened this last time around. But Dewey is the one that directly addressed it, so I thought I would let him address the issue with you.
Ms. Caldwell, are you?
Hi, Judge, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here and putting this on the agenda. Like the mayor, I too understood from conversations with Mr. Ortiz and others sometime back that we were going to see early voting on the island and we perceived this as a follow-through of that perceived promise. We were quite disappointed in the cancellation of that. We had a lot of folks on the island who had spoken with me over the last year or so in anticipation of this being the case. I gave a call to Mr. Ortiz, who was kind enough to speak with me about it and explain that indeed, the situation had changed at the behest of the court. And consequently, I asked him to please see if he could get that reconsidered and assured him that the commission, the folks on the island were very much desirous of having the early voting in our location, particularly with our, our new facility that we have and that the town would certainly be willing to share in the cost of that issue if that was a problem. And I then followed up with a call to the good Commissioner there, Ms. Benavides, and she spoke with me about the matter and I explained much the same thing to her. It means a lot to the folks on the island. There are reasons why this is important to them. The folks there, many of the folks that we have on the island are senior citizens. Many of them don't know their way around, particularly off the island. They are part-time residents. I should say part-time residents, they're certainly residents who are qualified to vote and they're spending anywhere from six to eight months on the island and perhaps go, go back to their former residence elsewhere. But they really appreciate having the opportunity to have it there. It's much more convenient for them and they really adamantly hope that this would be the case for a long, long time. That's not to say that our long-term residents, our long-term permanent residents don't feel much the same way. And so we, we would certainly ask that you all reconsider this, particularly in light of what we're able to do to assist if that's, if money is the issue.
I support having a location on the island, but let me ask Roger, what are the, logistically, what is it, are we still within the timeframe to be able to add the island or let's say, eliminate another spot and add the island or just add the island altogether? Can we do that in terms of getting permission from-
Well, there's, there's things that need to be done.
You have some permission would be from the Department of Justice.
But do we have time right now?
We could ask the Department of Justice to expedite it, and what I can do is call in, call it in, or fax it in, and try to see if I can get that done. There's paperwork that needs to be done in our office, and we would certainly abide by the Commissioner's wishes, as I have placed in a memo to Commissioner Benavides. We'll do it. It's going to be pretty hard on us, but, I mean, if it has to be done, we'll do it. I've got no problem with that.
Well, we need some discussion here. I have some questions. First of all, is it legal to do this? Is there anything illegal about it? To have a city pay for the site? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm asking that question.
Okay, I can't address that.
So I'll direct it to our legal counsel.
That's something that I would have to look at, but off the cuff, and it doesn't seem like it would be legal, because under the Interlocal Act, as long as it's something that the county has the power to do and the city has the power to do, then we can work together to make an arrangement.
Okay, my other comment is this. Do we now need, in order to be fair countywide, let other municipalities find out? Because I know I've gotten a lot of calls from Santa Rosa, for instance, that we don't have a voting, early voting place in Santa Rosa. They're concerned, and of course, there's other communities that are not cities, for instance, Royal City. Those people are going to have to drive about 40 miles in order to come to an early voting place. So I think this is, is this going to set a precedent that communities can do this? I think this is something we need to think about.
Okay, I mean, Commissioner, and I agree with you that having an early voting place for people to drive so far, you know, it's not feasible for the voter.
Not conducive to...
But we certainly have a voting location for anybody in the county within 25 miles. The code specifies that we must have something within a 25-mile limit for somebody to go and vote.
But that's early vote. For early vote.
Yeah, for, yeah, for Election Day, it's a different story. We've got, we've got, you know, that's different, entirely different. But we do have a location for anybody to go within a 25-mile, I mean, much less than that, but, you know, 25 miles is what the code requires.
Well, I think that the issue here is that we had it there, and it had been that location on the island.
Well, we've had, we've had, we've had Election Day voting at the island, at City Hall, but we haven't had early voting at the island.
Not early voting?
We haven't had ever?
No.
I don't think so.
So how did it get there?
It goes back a year or more than a year ago, when representatives from the island had been asking for an early voting site at the island along with an Election Day site, okay? Probably back over a year ago. I had, I received several calls from the island, and it's, I'm not, right now, I can't remember who it was, but I know that I received some calls from City Hall, and it could have been from some of the aldermen there that requested that I try and place an early voting location at the island, and I said I would try. And so this time around, when the primaries, where we were scheduling for the primaries, I did place it on there for one week. I thought one week would be sufficient enough for the island area. We do have one in Port Isabel, like it's been noted before, and so it was brought to Commissioner's Court at that time. And so we've prepared, we have prepared to do our elections with the approved locations. I mean, we've done all of our paperwork, we've done all the preparations for it, we've ordered all of our supplies, we've gotten the ballots for, to supply those locations. And so to do an additional one or two locations, I mean, we have, we kind of have to go back and try to get everything expedited and done in a hurtly sort of way to get everything supplied and make sure that we start, we're ready to start early voting on the 19th.
Well, Roger, when I was called by the town of South Padre Island, by members of the commission, I had no idea, okay, that your office had been contacted to put them on. I saw it on the agenda, we talked about it here, and it was voted down.
Yes.
And, but I think that the whole idea is to allow every citizen to be able to vote. And I realize that the precedent that would be set here would be to a disadvantage for some of the other communities that probably would not be able to fund their own voting precincts. But maybe in the future, I mean, I'd really, I'm in favor of it, and I would hope that the county, that the rest of the Commissioner's Court would see fit to put it there. I think it's time we start making these voting sites available at every possible place that the county can do so, to encourage voter turnout. And so with that, I'll leave it to the Commissioner.
Why can't we just reverse the action that we took last week and just put it back the way it was originally? Because didn't we, last week, we eliminated the island and added...
That was a couple of weeks ago. I think it was earlier in January.
Okay, two weeks ago, where we eliminated the island and then put another one. Why can't we just reverse that action? If the court wishes, eliminate the Brownie Park location and put it back at South Padre Island, the way it was originally presented by you.
Well, I can see us doing the island, but I certainly don't feel like we ought to be eliminating the one at Park and Brownie.
Exactly, no, I don't...
Because that's an area that is really isolated. People don't have, they don't have the ability to get out and travel to vote, and it's a large population in that area. It serves, you know, several precincts. If the city of South Padre Island wants to volunteer to donate money to help defray the cost of this facility there for early voting, that's something maybe we ought to look at, but...
But we need to look at it today.
I'm not in favor of that.
We need to do something today.
I certainly would not want to replace anyone, and I want to make that perfectly clear. I certainly don't want to knock anyone out.
They knocked you out.
Well, I understand that, but I also think that it's very important, like the Commissioner said, that people have the opportunity to vote, and if people in Santa Rosa are having to drive 10, 15 miles, or whatever it is, to early vote, personally, I don't think that should be the case. So I, you know, in, for this particular election, I would, I would suggest the court consider leaving the...
Brownie Park? Brownie Park?
Leaving that one, and seeing if we can't get early voting on South Padre Island, we will go ahead and fund it this time around, so that we make sure that we have it and that that community has it as well. And then I would suggest that Commissioner's Court look in the future of possibly increasing the locations so that others have that opportunity. But I don't want to stand up here and say, you know, let's knock somebody out to allow us back in, even though it was the reverse two weeks ago.
Well, fundamentally, I don't think it's appropriate to have each city pay, because you may have a community like Santa Rosa that can't afford to pay to have an early voting location. The island can, but you get to these smaller little entities that cannot afford it. So all of a sudden, well, those that can pay can set up an early voting location, which I don't think that's, that's not right. But in this case, because we are kind of under the gun, maybe, I don't have any problem doing that. If Roger can logistically do it, add the island, it's not that expensive, quite frankly, I don't think. If you want to do that, then that's fine.
If it's not that expensive, maybe we can add some other sites.
Well, if it's not expensive for them to do it, but again, we have to be, we have a budget set up already. Is that correct, Roger? And we have nowhere, I don't think, is going to find money someplace else, you know, to get this from. I don't know how much it would run, maybe $3,000 or $4,000 per location, if I had to guess. I don't know. But I think at this point, we have the city that wants to fund it, they want to work with it. If the city of Santa Rosa wants something and they want to fund it, you know, we've got a limited amount of time to, you know, we can't go back and wait, bring it back next week, because then you're only two weeks out.
Well, that's why I brought it up. And first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor. You're a kind person, I've known that all along, and your remarks just now proved it again, that you care about all the people of Cameron County and not just Padre Island. And I thoroughly agree with your remarks. What I would like is, as soon as possible, Roger, that especially Santa Rosa, that you contact them and let them know that if we take this course, where they're going to be paying for it, that they be, that they be aware that that's a possibility, but they're going to have to move fast if they want it.
Commissioner, if I may, if I may ask that the contact not be made by me? I don't believe that I could have the authority. Well, maybe Commissioner's giving me authority to do something like that, but it'd be setting a precedent where I'd be getting calls. I'm going to start getting calls from different cities or different areas.
Well, then I'll take care, I'll let them know what action we've taken.
Well, okay, then...
Well, at some point, we're going to run out of, we have to have one machine at each location? Is that right? And we don't have a lot of extra machines, and those machines are a pretty good capital investment. So we may not be able to add too many more. I don't know how many extra machines you have, Roger. I assume you keep one as a backup or...
Well, we've got equipment, because I always keep at least five of each one, the Automark and the M-100, in hand, because in an election such as this, I mean, we've got 72 locations for one party and 34 locations for another party.
Machine's not the issue at this point.
And so maybe the people from Rancho Viejo will be calling about voting site. They can probably afford it.
But maybe this agenda item should be taking action, because we're not going to have time between now and the next meeting to do this. And you cannot be calling commissioners to get this, because then you have an open meetings issue. So I'm wondering if maybe we ought to do is maybe approve this, subject to any municipality that wants to call to do it.
I wasn't saying for us to table this.
No, no, no.
I was just saying that especially Santa Rosa, because I've gotten a lot of calls from there.
Yeah, but Commissioner, the issue, though, is that if Santa Rosa, if we don't do, if we're not real specific with the wording of this...
Oh, it's too late for the next meeting?
No, you can't. I don't think you have enough time.
Well, we can have a special meeting.
As it is, we're stretching it now.
It's tight, it is right now.
But what we can do is have an agenda item or read the agenda, because this is very generic. Approve the island. We can approve Santa Rosa, subject to...
To them...
Them coming up with, willing to fund it.
Exactly.
That way, you know, let's say, if you call them tomorrow and say, hey, we'll do it, Roger knows by tomorrow to go ahead and include the Santa Rosa location. We don't have to wait for the following Tuesday to have an agenda item on. So if we want, we can do that, and if you want to do it with Rancho Viejo as well.
What item are we, the supplemental?
The supplemental. You know, we can do it, subject, you know, approved, I don't know if we can do any municipality, but we can, let's say, name Santa Rosa, city of Rancho Viejo, and it's subject to them, to them funding it. If you want to contact Rancho Viejo to do that, you can. You can call Santa Rosa, you can, that you get back with Roger, you know, they're going to do it, they're going to pay for it. But then you're going to have, between now and tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., you're going to have to come up with a cost estimate as how much it's going to cost to fund these locations.
Is this going to be a one-week location or a two-week?
I would think a one-week location.
The early voting.
For early voting. And that way you do it. That way, if Santa Rosa can't pony up to $3,000 or $4,000, then it's a moot point.
It's going to be about $3,600.
But at least, at least you have, at least you have an agenda item that gives you the latitude to do that if you want. That's my suggestion, if you all want to do that.
Okay, and we're going to wait for the, for an answer by tomorrow?
Well, you're going to have to begin, well, we don't know if Santa Rosa can do it.
First, you have to let me know what the cost is. And then, you know, you'll get an answer right away. I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair with them, because they had been calling, and I got quite a few phone calls, and they were concerned because of the fact there was no site in their area. And I think, in all fairness to them, we need to give them the same opportunity.
Now, a Royal City, they're a little bit different, because they're not incorporated. So to try to get them all together to come up, everybody pony up a few bucks, it's going to be difficult. A Royal City?
No, a Royal City, it won't be possible.
See, and so, you want to do that? I think Commissioner Gatsa has a question of legal.
Yeah. Are we going to get ourselves into any legal ramifications with the Department of Justice in regards to fair and equal accessibility to a voting location?
See, that's why I asked if it was legal.
We're conditioning, if we're going to do anything other than, you know, the request we have before us is the town of South Padre, okay? That's the request, and that's why it came forward. But if we do more, or if we start offering it to others, and they say, well, we would like one, but we cannot fund it, will the Department of Justice look at that as an unfavorable creation conditions of voting? You know how they are all the time with this equal opportunity stuff?
Well, that's why, that's why, preface, I didn't think it was fair to have, just because the South Padre can afford to fund it, to do that precisely for that reason, you might have the four communities that cannot afford to do it, and they're being left out, even though they want one, but they can't afford to do it. That was the initial...
Well, then my issue is if they can't, and we don't do it, will we be in any kind of a situation where...
I don't know. This is why, I'd need to talk with them tomorrow morning, first thing tomorrow morning, and just find out the ramifications, because I want to make sure that, you know, allowing the city to pay for it, you know, will be an allowable type of agreement under the Interlocal. So at this time, I couldn't answer that question.
Can we move to approve it pending legal review with the Department of Justice?
And I'll get with Roger, because I know...
And with Roger, and making sure that it's all going to be okay before we proceed?
We can do that.
Then that's my motion.
Now, see, at the very beginning, that was my question. Is it legal for a lot of different reasons? The one, a city getting involved and paying for it, and then the legality of it as far as being fair to all the population.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion for Commissioner Gatsa to approve, subject to legal, whether we can do this, where the island pays. You want to include that as part of your motion, any other entity that wants to participate?
Second.
Can you do that, Gilby? Okay. That was moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? And then, as soon as you know, contact Roger so he can move on that.
Well, I'd like to get with Roger and call together, because he knows the people of the Secretary of State and their legal...
Okay, you got it. All right.
And then shortly after you get an answer, please let us know.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, the mayor is also here for item 27.
Let's go to item 27, if there's no objection. Discussion and possible action regarding the withdrawal of prior annexation approval of designated area of county property south of the town of South Padre Island, and approval of the new proposed boundary area. Mayor, as you know, this is the, I don't know how many times it's come up, but we got some correspondence, some folks that initially said yes, now they say no. So we're back to discuss this again and let you know that the ones that are saying nay, I guess we have to carve them out, I guess.
That's fine.
Okay, is there anything else we have to do with that, Pete?
No? Okay. Do you have to draw up some new boundaries or something?
Yeah, new survey would be required.
All right.
And who pays for that?
The city of South Padre Island. Right, yes. They hired a surveyor to do the initial survey, then the amended survey, and I guess now they would amend it again.
The only thing I'm concerned about, and I, but I mean, I don't, we'll obviously do it, subject to that, is I'm a little concerned on making sure that the properties match up, you know, connect, but I mean, that's just something that...
You can work that out.
I mean, we'll just deal with it at the time that it happens. I think it will, but that's my only concern. Other than that, we're ready to go, and we can, we can get them to redo it and move on.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the withdrawal of the entities that, I guess, from the annexation, and then instruct Pete to get together the mayor and his survey crew to redo the lines of those entities?
Right, and then their attorney would also draw up the petition.
Okay. Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Benavides? Do I have a second? By Commissioner Tomayo, any further discussion?
Question. Is every entity or business that is in the described area of the annexation included in our backup here?
Well, everybody that, everybody was contacted. Now, they might have not responded, but was everybody contacted?
Well, because everybody was contacted initially, and some of the people that I see here saying they did not support it were all at a meeting, and I think Commissioner Benavides was at the meeting too, and they all supported this. And now we have requests to non-support.
Right.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
We've gone back and forth, and you're right. Initially, we got letters of support from, I think, you know, most of the ones that are in here. Then we had a meeting. The mayor was there, Commissioner Benavides, park staff, myself, David. We went over all the issues, answered all the questions they had, and we thought, you know, we had an agreement, I guess, a week after that, and we got the first letter saying that, you know, they did not want to be part of the annexation. And then subsequent to that, I believe we've gotten two other letters. And then subsequent to that, I believe we've gotten two other letters and I think at this point we're at is Dirty Al's, it's not interested in being part of the annexation as well as a couple of subleases at the Marina. But Javier is here and I think he's met with some of the, the folks out there.
Well, the issue here is that they know that they could just send us a letter and we would exclude them? Did we officially acknowledge the fact that every one of them was contacted or not? Or is it just those that decided to be excluded sent the letter and that's what we're doing? Because again, it becomes a fairness issue, you know? I mean, some folks...
Well, we have, all the people that, that attended the meeting at Schlitterbaum, all of them agreed to do it.
And now they're saying they don't want to.
And now they're saying they don't, well, part of them are anyway.
Right.
But I think the mayor was very explicit in saying what the proposed annexation would be. I know Pete explained it, I explained it. No one there, after asking their questions, said they were against it.
I mean, I don't think we ought to be having the town of South Padre go pay for a re-survey just to exclude certain legal pieces of property, you know? I mean, we already agreed to any of these folks, did we not?
Yes.
As a commissioner's court?
And I think we should go forward. I really believe that we should go forward.
I think we need to table this item.
Well, on our, on our background information, there's only, there's three that say they do not.
Right.
Commissioner, if you want to make a motion to go ahead and go forward and ignore the, those people that want to be taken out, I guess you can do that.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. We already had a motion to, to take them out. So are you going to withdraw your motion to take them out and, and leave it the way it is?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have, Commissioner Tamayo, do you want to withdraw your second?
That, that was her motion?
Well, her motion was to go ahead and redraw, no, no. Your initial motion was to, to go ahead and eliminate...
Oh, that's true.
...the three entities that wanted to be pulled out. You seconded the motion. Commissioner Benavides is now saying no, go ahead and leave them in. I'm hearing you right. So she's, she was going to withdraw her motion. I'm asking if you'd like to withdraw your second of her motion to go back and redraw the lines.
And, and go back to what we had already voted on.
And go back the way it was originally. Okay, so you withdraw your motion. Okay. So now Commissioner Benavides, you're, you're going to go ahead and make a motion to basically leave it the way it is and, and not, this is all, we understand.
Judge...
Yes?
If I recall correctly, when we came back to discuss the, the Dirty Al's situation, if I recall correctly, the action from the court was that there was contingent upon getting a letter...
That's correct.
Of support from Dirty Al's. So since we did not, then I would say, that's something legal needs to interpret, but I would say that, then that action is void because we didn't get a letter of support. We got a letter saying that they do not wish to be...
Well, that's right. The, the initial action was we needed to get it in writing, those people that did not want to be included.
Dirty Al's specifically.
Okay. Dirty Al's was the only one, but then subsequent to that, others have come on board, either two, okay? Yeah, I understand that.
But I don't have anything from Dirty Al's in this packet.
No, I think that was, that was previously. That was way back.
Yeah, but it still wasn't included in here as the request to be...
I think that is the only one that...
Not in this one, but it was in the past.
Initially, that initially said no.
Right.
So is Dirty Al's in or out?
Well, what...
He would have to be out.
They're out because they sent a letter saying that they do not want to be in it.
And that's how we voted. So then they'll get...
Table it.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor.
I know.
Uh, so, okay, so then...
Pete, let, let me understand if you're, if I understand you correctly, we really haven't made a final decision on any annexation because we were waiting on Dirty Al's?
No, no.
Because if we made a final decision on annexation, I don't think we have the authority to de-annex. That's a whole different can of worms.
Well, the court approved a survey that included the, the sea ranch, the restaurant, the Marina, Schlitterbaum, and it did not include Dirty Al's.
Correct.
That's what we...
The court took action on that and we're fine on that.
Okay.
Subsequent to that, the court took action on Dirty Al's, contingent upon us getting a letter of support from Dirty Al's. We did not get that letter. We got a letter saying they do not want to be part. So what I'm saying is that, that part, in my opinion, is void. The other action the court took, that's, that's done.
What we've approved already annexes everything except Dirty Al's.
I think after...
Is that right?
If...
What we've already approved in the past, annexes everything except Dirty Al's.
That is correct. So if the court, if the court does not take action, then that action's already been taken by the court.
So what I'm saying is that I don't think we have the authority to de-annex. I don't know if some of these that wrote letters not wanting to be in there, which already are in there, I don't think we have the authority to de-annex them.
But, well, Commissioner, you're not de-annexing. What you're doing is, you haven't signed, the county judge has not signed the petition yet, so, but action you took, which is approving...
Yeah, but we voted for it.
We voted for it and approved it.
But it has to be a petition submitted by the county asking to be annexed and we have not done that. The county judge has not signed that petition yet.
They should have signed it after we voted on it.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't prepared yet by the attorneys for South Padre Island.
How many months ago is that due?
No, we just received that, maybe about three or four, three weeks ago.
How long ago did we vote on it?
Oh, I, I don't know. I don't remember.
Last year. Long time ago.
Yeah, but we can't control what they send us or what they don't send us.
I understand that, but we've already made the action when we did it. And everyone was annexed at that time.
Well...
Anyway, apparently we're going in that direction now anyway.
Yeah.
Is that right? And the only one left out is Dirty Al's.
That's correct.
Okay.
So should we table this item legal?
Do you want to table it? You can table it if you want, but if, I mean, the action that you took, the last action that you took was you agreed to give permission to annex the area except for Dirty Al's. The petition had, was just submitted to us maybe three weeks ago and, and I took it to the county judge and we talked about it and we knew that there were some of these business owners that were maybe not in support of it again, so that's when we decided to make sure who was and who was not in support of, of being annexed. And this is the result. But no annexation has been done by the city because they can't do that until we submit a petition asking to do that. We have not done that yet.
Yeah, but John says correctly that we acted as a commissioner's court in approving everything except Dirty Al's.
Right.
That's correct.
That's what we've done, so we're really on.
You sign that thing or bring it to me and I'll sign it.
Someone needs to sign it. Should have been here a long time ago.
It's a sign.
Move to approve.
So we need to...
But my concern is...
So we don't need an action on this.
My concern is how could we crowd these things up so much by including all these people that now want to be annexed on the agenda item? That's my concern.
That do not want to be annexed.
I know. That already were.
Some are saying yes.
Yeah, but some were saying no. That we're already part of the annexation process.
Before.
Before and already been approved by this court.
And I don't think we have the authority to de-annex anyone.
And I think their concern was at this meeting that they would be insured that all regulations as far as ordinances, that they would still stay within the county of regulations...
Yeah, there were, you know, two basic issues that came up. One was the signage. Number two was health inspections.
And that was it.
But, you know, the mayor was there. Every single question that they posed, you know, we answered and then they kept going back to those two issues over and over and over, but, so if this item is tabled, then the previous action taken by the commission stands.
That's it?
We have to withdraw the motion on the...
What more was true?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear, Commissioner, do you, Ms...
Benavides first.
Withdraw your motion again to table it? I mean, to approve it the way it was presented?
Yes. I moved...
Do it, your second.
Presented today.
Correct.
And I second that.
Okay, now, do I hear a motion to table the item? My Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
My Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. All right.
We are where we were.
And, but...
We are where we were.
But we have to take the next step.
No, that's it. The next step is that the judge needs to sign the petition.
That's the step I'm talking about.
I never gave a shit about five months ago.
All right.
I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I do want to make one more comment. Now, let me tell you that the reason that it wasn't signed was because these things were still pending.
Right. No, and I understand that.
Not because I could sign it doesn't matter, but they were still pending, and I still, I still think there's some things pending. I still think, I think when we talked about it, we gave the property owners the opportunity to bail out or in. Well, how they got the message or didn't, but kind of, we got three letters here that they did not want to do it and now they're in it.
Well, part of, part of the confusion was, was that Dirty Al's has flip-flopped several times. They, they wrote a letter saying they agreed. We came back to you and said, here's a letter saying they agreed. Then the meeting came up that we all had to attend because suddenly some people got cold feet. Then we left that meeting and everybody was fine.
But let me ask you, but who contacted, the, the three that we got letters from saying they didn't want to be annexed? How did they know to write us something that they didn't want to be annexed other than Dirty Al's? I mean, I didn't have any contact with anybody out there. So some of, so they just took it upon themselves to write us and say, hey, we don't want to be annexed? So I don't know. Okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Just one quick comment. I'd like to publicly congratulate the mayor and his council and his city administration. I was at the ribbon-cutting this morning of a beautiful building on the town of South Padre. I thought we were high-tech here. They're high-tech over there.
Well, but you have a lot of history behind you.
Yes, yes. But you're making history there. And, you know, they have a beautiful building, very, very user-friendly building, and I would encourage everyone here to drop by, not into the left side of the entrance of the building, that's where they book you, but the rest of the building.
Thank you very much for being there.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations on your facility. Consent items, consent items and travel items. So are there any items any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately?
Thirteen.
Yes. Thirteen.
Item thirteen.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Item fifteen and sixteen. Item nineteen.
Judge, could you include number thirty under consent, please?
And include item thirty as part of the consent.
Nineteen, did you pull out nineteen?
I pulled out nineteen. Anything on travel?
Include thirty in consent.
Include thirty in consent. Do I hear a motion to approve all those items with the exception of those that I mentioned?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirteen, consideration and authorization to exempt from the County Purchasing Act the contract for the transportation of deceased bodies to the morgue for autopsy, specifically the requirements of V T C A Code Section 262.023 pursuant to the authority granted in Section 562.024A and 2. Commissioner Tamayo, that was yours.
Yes, Judge. When I was reviewing the agenda, I, I couldn't clarify exactly what we were trying to do here. So I called on David Garcia to explain that to me and I would appreciate it if he would do that at this time, the manner in which he explained it to me.
Judge, Commissioners, Commissioner Tamayo, this is an agenda item that was placed on, on by legal. We're having a discussion regarding the transport of our bodies that are going to our morgue, to our forensic pathologist facility. And in order for us to be able to, to move forward with contracting with somebody, we need to do an exemption from the County Purchasing Act. If I'm not mistaken, legal can correct me. And so this agenda item will allow us to do that.
This was as a result of the concern brought to us by Dr. DeWitt.
Okay.
Okay?
Farley.
Dr. Far, DeWitt.
Dr. Farley.
Wishful thinking.
So, so, so what will happen is that they'll be able to go out for bids?
We'll be able to put a, right, the court will...
Pardon?
The court will be able to go out for bids or do an RFP to select one or a group of transport services for transporting bodies to our autopsy service area.
And that's, and that's the key information right there, that, that I felt needed to be clarified.
Staff will, can negotiate directly with provider or issue an RFP, right?
That's right.
Either or.
What staff would that be?
That would be you all and legal.
Or whoever you designate.
Correct.
Whoever the court designate.
Any further discussion?
Judge, Commissioners, I think you have some funeral home owners that would like to make some statements.
I'm sorry?
There's some funeral directors here.
Owners from funeral homes?
Oh, I thought, okay.
May I want to say something?
Well, let me, let me hear a motion and a second. Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo, discussion. Is this something that you all are okay with? Now, if you all are all going to say the same thing, then that's great. We can just limit it to a couple of folks unless you're all going to have a disagreeing conversation.
Judge, Commissioners, I understand what you're trying to do. First question we have for you, are we going back to Harlingen for autopsies instead of, we're, right now, we're going to Hidalgo County. The question I have, when are we going to Harlingen to Valley Baptist? Do you know? Does, does the commission know?
We don't have a date yet.
There's no date yet?
Yes.
So as we stand right now, we're going to Hidalgo County?
Right.
Correct?
That's my understanding.
So...
Until the facility at Valley Baptist is upgraded, which should be within the next, hopefully, couple of weeks.
They were waiting for equipment to be coming in.
So as soon as that equipment comes in, then we'll, we'll start transporting to So as soon as that equipment comes in, then we'll, we'll start transporting to Harlingen? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Judge. Last time they were here, the update they gave us was the end of January. We're already at the end of January and so.
So give it, give another couple of weeks for contingencies, okay?
Are you all familiar right now how it's operated right now in Cameron County? When we have a homicide in Brownsville or in Cameron County? Do you all know what we're up against?
I do not.
Maybe you should let them know.
Would you like to be educated quickly?
Yes.
If it's quickly.
Okay. We get notified from a justice of the peace to go to the scene or to the hospital, make a removal. If it's trauma accident, we have to use body bags. From here, we go, then the judge, at his request, picks out a funeral home at random, whether it's Salazar, Tony Torres, or any of the, the JP's up in Harlingen. And from there, we go up, right now, we're going to Hidalgo County. I think they're paying us $300 right now from Brownsville to Hidalgo. Then we have to go back to Hidalgo and get that body back and retrieve it for the next of kin. So actually, the cost of gasoline's gone up here recently. But that's what we're up against. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that. I mean, I've got representatives from all the local independent funeral homes behind me. We're just inquisitive to know if we're gonna still continue, or, or is it gonna be sold to the bidder? You know, what's going on? We don't know. We would like to be educated on it ourselves.
And we're given, I think, by doing the action we're doing tonight is, we're giving ourselves the opportunity to RFP, which would be to send, ask for proposals as to, I don't think any of us want to shortchange your, your operations or your costs, you know? On the contrary, I think that this court increased those costs not too long ago compared to what they were.
Do you know what indigent burial's paying right now to the funeral homes?
Well, but that's not on the agenda, though.
It's not on the agenda, but just for your information, it's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
For indigents. It's been that way since I was before the Commissioners and the Court back in the other session. But I mean, that's regardless. Right now, we're just trying to figure out what do we do and how far are we gonna go with it? And where do we stand on it? I feel as though personally, as an independent, I feel the JP's doing what they're doing right now are doing a fair job. That's my suggestion right now. I don't know how the other guys feel about it, but if you hire it to somebody, well, are they gonna be on the scene as quick as we are? Are they coming from Hidalgo County all the way to Cameron County to make a removal and then take it back there? I don't know. This is something y'all need to be aware of. There's a lot of factors involved. There's more than meets the eye.
Well, this action would be our first step in trying to get something resolved. That's the way I'm interpreting this.
Right. This is just moving in the, in the direction.
At that pace.
Of adequately compensating folks that doing work for the county. Because the right to. And allowing all of you to turn in, if it's an RFP, each one of you could turn in your own, or you could get together as, as a group and turn in, you know, what you wish as a group and, you know, go on a rotating call basis? I mean, that's up to you, to you all.
May, may, are, are y'all telling us that the system that we have right now isn't broke? It doesn't need fixing? Or is there something that needs fixing about it that we can accomplish by going through an RFP process?
And, and you're exactly right, Commissioner. I mean, it's not broke.
Okay.
So, I mean, why try to fix it? The bottom line is, are we going to take away the family's decision as to what funeral home they want to use? A lot of the times, there are family members present whenever we pick up a human remains.
Sure.
And they tell the judge what funeral home they want to use. But if the judge has to say, well, we have a private contractor that's gonna come all the way from McAllen or Timbuktu or wherever, is that gonna take away from the family's right to decide what funeral home takes custody of their loved one? That's my concern.
I can imagine me being in that situation and a family member needing to go somewhere. I would certainly want to be able to say where that family member was gonna go to.
That's totally fair.
Commissioners, we never, we never had a problem before, when we were working with Valley Baptist in the years and years where we, we respond to the call, we go up to the scene, we transport the loved ones to Valley Baptist, and then at that time, they'll call us for us to, when, when the autopsy's being completed, they'll, we'll go ahead and bring their loved ones back to the funeral home. But we never had problems with, when we were working with Valley Baptist, the problems, we wanna know where the problems are right now. Is there, the problems needs to be addressed to us as independent funeral directors, we need to know, because there's no communication between Savio Funeral Home, Dr. Farley, and our funeral homes here in Cameron County. So we need to find out where we stand.
David, tell us how this agenda item is going to help them. Because I think, I think it is broken. And the reason it's broken is because the compensation that we're currently paying you, you're just telling me, Ali, that it, you know, it's, it's not, it's not sufficient. So there's something wrong there. And the answer's not necessarily, well, let's, let's double it, let's bump it up. So I wanna hear how this agenda item is going to help, I guess, address their concerns that they have and, and it's gonna help them.
And I think you need to also include to address the concerns that were brought to us by Dr. Farley when she was here about a month ago in regards to the receipt of bodies and the timing and the tagging and the body bags and issues that she had brought to our attention with the concerns.
Well, a couple of things. The first, obviously, is, you know, we're trying to get back to Valley Baptist so that we'll, we'll be in Cameron County and we'll be closer to, you know, centrally located areas so that we'll have 24/7 access to the facility there and the confusion will hopefully The, the other issue is that when we, when we settled on Dr. Farley and having the Sebais Funeral Home or morgue be the facility, the funeral directors were here as well that day and I believe most of them agreed with the, the rate that was gonna be given to them at that time. And so I don't know why now there's, there is an issue with that. And then so, and then also, we've been, and you may have, gentlemen may have a point with the, the communication between Dr. Farley and the funeral director, because we get phone calls from Dr. Farley. It's usually on a long weekend or something happens, you know, on a holiday weekend where a body needs to get to Sebais and it hasn't gone there and, you know, people are trying to figure out where the body's at. And she's calling and she's not getting any response according to her from, from the funeral home that, that is being, that's responsible for transporting at that time. So she's giving us all that, this information and telling us that she's trying to work with the funeral home. And so I guess it was three weeks ago when Dr. Farley came, when we were talking about the medical legal death investigator position, and that was one of the recommendations she gave to us so that we would have an investigator on board to help the JP's, you know, fan out some of the issues that they're working on. As well as, the other recommendation she gave us at that time was to try to do a transport service similar to what Hidalgo County is doing. And that would help with the communication, that would set some parameters, that would set some guidelines and some, I guess, rules to make sure that everything's being followed thoroughly and that, that everything is being done according to a contract. Because right now, I think the contract is vague and, you know, times and, and how, how long, you know, they're supposed to take from when they pick up bodies to when they deliver it. Correct me if I'm wrong, David. And so those are some of the issues that we've been dealing with, the helping facilitate some of the work with the JP's and then also transporting the bodies in a timely fashion. Like I said, hopefully, it'll get better with, when we move to Valley Baptist. And, and so we need to figure out what we're gonna do when we move to Valley Baptist in terms of transporting the bodies.
From what I understand, the move to Valley Baptist will clear up a lot of the problems because if I understand it correctly, and I may, I'm subject to being corrected on this, is that sometimes Savio's Funeral Home doesn't have a available facility to accept bodies on the weekends when they're full, you know, and you drive a body up there, they turn you around and tell you to go back home. Well, you know, what do you do with it at that point in time? And this seems to be Dr. Farley's problem, that, you know, if she doesn't have the body there to work on Monday morning, she doesn't have it there because, not necessarily because of what the funeral directors that were transporting the bodies did, but because the facility that she has asked us to use, Savio's Funeral Home, doesn't have the facility available at the time they need to be available. So perhaps the issue of getting back to Valley Baptist will solve that problem.
It should, for sure.
And, and that's what I think is happening.
And, Commissioner, I do agree with you on that. There's, the last time I was here, the meeting, we had a call and we, we responded to the call and we called Savio in a timely, timely manner to let them know we're en route to, to transport a loved one. And they turned us back and said, take it to Valley Baptist because our coolers are completely full. And we'll call you Monday morning for, let you know what we need to do. So then we get a call from Monday morning, we get a call from Dr. Farley's office asking us where is the body? Because the police officers were there. And I said, well, they told us that to take the body to Valley Baptist. So we have to go back to Valley Baptist, do a second removal, and then take that body back to McAllen. Because there's, what I, we're thinking here, there's no communication between Savio Funeral Home and Dr. Farley's office. So we're trying to compromise and work with, with the agencies and try to see what we can do to make things easier for all of us, you know? And now there's an issue about the body bags, that all the bodies are not being tagged and, and according to Dr. Farley, we never got a fax, we never got a memo, we never received any information concerning how she wants the human, human remains to be transported once we get to Savio. We got the memo after she made that discussion with y'all. And I have a copy of that fax that we received and all the other funeral directors here from different parts of the county, from Orange and Subanito, Brownsville, that how she wants the human remains to be delivered once we go to Savio Funeral Home.
And I think that, see, this is where the RFP would come in because it would itemize those things that they wouldn't want to occur. And at the same time, the RFP would give all of you the opportunity to ask for adequate compensation for the work that you do. If it's more expensive than what we're paying you now, this'll be the opportunity for you all to tell us in an RFP manner what the cost should be.
You're, you're, you're saying that individual or local transportation, or you're talking about an outside agency come into the county?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
When you're saying the RFP, are you gonna allow other counties to come in and, and, and?
I think we have to.
Legally, I think when you do an RFP, right, I mean, it's just whoever.
But I think the, the RFP should be structured in such a way where it's gonna address not only fees, but timeliness, you know, insur, you know, whatever it is. But I mean, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have somebody from Bear County do that and, you know, or even, you know, another neighboring county if it's, you know, because part, part of the, part of the, I think part of the RFP process, you know, one of the, one of the factors is gonna be, how, how quickly can you get this body to where it needs to go? You know, if y'all are, come up with a proposal, it's gonna take us an hour and a half. Somebody else, it's gonna be three hours. Well, obviously, the hour and a half is gonna be something that, that we'll look at, but it's gotta be weighed along with the factor of cost and timeliness, your insurance, your facilities, your vehi, you know, all those things. And you're gonna put the RFP together with somebody, I assume, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does anyone other than funeral homes do this type of transport? I would think that there would be ambulance services that may respond to the RFP that could very possibly give us a, a different view of being able to take care of.
Ambulance cost, ambulance, serving on the EMS boards, ambulance costs are exorbitant compared to the care costs.
Well, some of the ambulance companies are in transport business only, and that's really what they like.
Yeah.
And if they're not out doing something else, they wanna keep those things on the road.
Yeah.
I, I think if, if we get, you know, I'd, I'd kinda like to see this postponed for a while till after we get Valley Baptist in place and operating and then see if we have the problems. But I think the problems are generally gonna go away at that time.
And I was gonna say, Commissioner, before we go out and draft an RFP and do any of that, we're gonna set up a meeting with Savio's Funeral Home, Dr. Farley, and the funeral directors, funeral homes, see if we can iron out some of these differences and some of these issues, and then start working, you know, at that time, the appropriate time on an RFP or.
I think that would be even better.
Well, I know we've got a motion and a second, but I'd like to see one to table it. Do you wanna, at least till after Valley Baptist is in?
Well, here we go again. Commissioner Ganso, you made the motion. Commissioner Tamayo, you seconded the motion to, to approve item thirteen. Commissioner Ganso, you wanna withdraw it? And, and Commissioner Tamayo, do you wanna second it and then table it?
Let me hear John's, but, why do you want to table, John?
My idea is to table it until after Valley Baptist gets into operation and then see if we have a problem at that time that we need to address because, you know, the, these folks standing in front of us who do the transporting say it's really not broke right now. There are some issues that need to be taken care of, but apparently, the consensus is that Valley Baptist, once they start operating, will be able to take care of those issues.
So you're saying wait until they have their meeting?
I'm saying wait until after Valley Baptist is operating and accepting and, yep, I don't, you know, they probably need to meet.
But in the meantime, have them meet. Well, in the meantime, what's?
They can meet.
What's gonna happen? Because it, it's weeks away from it.
Maybe months, who knows? You can do what we're doing right now.
Just leave us.
So you're not complaining about what you get paid?
No, we need to discuss that, yes.
Well, I mean, the only way to discuss it is to go to some kind of system.
We need to talk about it, yes.
Well, you know, the, the way that, that we can negotiate and talk is through, in a system of.
The bid process.
Either allowing staff to negotiate directly with or issuing an RFP, and that's why it's open-ended in how it's done here. Because we would like the opportunity to make sure that we adequately compensate folks that are doing work.
And have some structure to it.
And, and structure in regards to the issues of tagging, body bags, timeliness.
The tagging was done at Valley Baptist with security. There wasn't a problem with that. It was always handled through security. It was simple, it was factual, it worked.
But we're not there right now.
Which, which, I'm saying, that, that wasn't a problem. Obviously, the problem's in Hidalgo County. The doctor doesn't like the way we handle our business from down here. We need to discuss it with her so we can work with her. I don't have a problem putting a toe tag on a body when I'm in route, you know, that's nothing to it. But we need to keep her happy. She's the main labor.
Well, we're gonna set up a meeting for next week to discuss some of these issues and we'll be back to you.
Well, if, if we allow the item to go, we can at least allow staff to also negotiate.
Yeah, talk to them, see where they're at.
Well, that's where we are at right now.
This item's not gonna, it's not an RFP approval or anything, you know?
It's just a either or, let's move.
We have a motion and a second for that, to do that.
Okay, and what we're talking about is staff getting with them and talking, y'all having some meetings among yourselves, also with Dr. Farley, finding out when Valley Baptist is gonna come online, seeing how that will operate and what that will do for improvements of your operation, and, and Dr. Farley's also. And then you'll come back to us, staff, at some point and fill us in on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, just so we understand, that is not what we're passing here.
Well, that's, that's what the result of what we pass here will be.
An exemption.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I wanna mention one thing, Judge.
Yes, Oscar.
Okay. Uh, there's two points. About five years ago, could have been approximately five years ago, they, they brought this item up for RMP bids. There wasn't an entity that wanted a bid on, on Cameron County. It's already been before the board or the commission on that, they weren't able to do anything in that area. There's only one person that we're aware of that wants to do it, and they're out of Hidalgo County. The, you know, that's the, the commission's choice to deal with people from out of the county. I think it's more efficient to have the funeral homes work the way they've been working. There's another point that I, I've tried to talk to people on the, on the Commissioners' Court, is that, you know, they're looking at models from other counties, other cities. Why don't they look at the, the models that, that have, smaller counties have their own facilities, their own morgue, they're not paying, you know, a hospital exorbitant fees for, for refrigeration or an embalming service, an exorbitant fee for refrigeration per day? That there's been bodies there that, and their requirements are, a family member has to sign a release form in order for them to release them. So they really have, have you all over a bag, or over a barrel, and they're holding these bodies there, I, I think you can check into that, for a day after day, $75 a day. If you own the facility, you know, you could pay out for what you're paying for, for Valley Baptist or these other facilities, you could own a facility like that in, probably in seven years. And then the, the county would be able to use that money they were paying for those expenses for other things that we really need and we can't budget in there. I know that's not on the agenda, I'd like to see how it can be brought up, you know, for an agenda item to be researched.
The Valley Baptist facility is no pay associated with that.
I'm sorry?
There's no pay associated with the Valley Baptist facility.
Okay, they, they just do it as a?
Right. The only thing we pay for is tox, toxicology reports that are done, which you would have to send out to a lab somewhere, wherever you do them.
But not for the facility?
What we're, what we're doing right now is, is they're doing it for pay, though, right?
Where, where we're at now, not because of choice, but because we didn't have a choice.
Right. And Dr. Farley is, is paying Valley Baptist for using their facility. So you're really paying Valley Baptist through Dr. Farley. You know, it's just like a, the, the people that do the autopsy, don't they have to pay for the use of the facility?
No, sir.
No? Well, I'm at a loss.
We pay her for her services.
I've been misinformed then, I apologize.
We pay her for her services per autopsy.
Right. Okay. But there's, there's counties with much lower populations that have their own facilities and medical examiners that are paid much less.
Oscar, if you can get that information to us, specifically which counties? I don't know of any small.
Nortis County, Nortis County is 321,400.
Yeah, they have their own, yeah, we know that.
They've had it for 20 years. We're, our estimate is 381,712. We're 66,000 heads.
But they have, but they have interlocal agreements with other surrounding counties to do that.
With the 13 surrounding counties that are part of their facility.
And I will tell you that the, the Hidalgo County judge and, and us have been talking about doing a regional facility, and that's part of our capital improvement plan that we're gonna work on at some point to do that. So we, we are going in that direction at some point. And developing a medical examiner.
I wanna apologize, I've received false information about what Valley Baptist was getting for a body.
That's right.
Because I was given erroneous information according to you all.
On the contrary, they're even doing the improvements at their own expense.
At their own expense.
Okay. I apologize about that.
That's all right. We, we get, we get erroneous information all the time. So don't worry about it.
So really, what we're looking at is a short-term solution and a long-term plan.
Right.
And we're aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Inadequately compensating you people is part of the plan?
Well, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had a motion by Commissioner Ganso, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item fifteen, consideration approval to reject RFP number 070105 for locations five and six and possible action to solicit bid including approval of bid document for beach rental concessions at DJ Lerma L6 and San Piper Pavilion L50 located at Isla Blanca Park. Who pulled that one?
I asked that it be pulled. First of all, I wanted to make sure that Legal, I know that your signature is here, that you approved the document, or?
Yes, even after, as of yesterday, we were still making a couple of changes, but yes, I approved the document.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking that is that, not due to anyone else's fault Okay, well, the reason I'm asking that is that not due to anyone else's fault but my own. I got sick yesterday afternoon, so I went to the doctor and got the email with a document, I understand, after I left. So I haven't seen it, and I just have it in my possession, but I haven't read it. I just wanted to make sure that everything is in order.
One of the things that Judge Coskus had wanted addressed was the current concessionaire, whoever that person was, having enough time to be able to vacate the premises. And I added some language to that effect in the instructions to the bidders.
Anything further?
I think we need a little better explanation than what we've gotten up to now.
Yeah.
You know, because there is confusion out there as to why we're doing this on only two properties versus five that were bid out together initially. And I think that I would like Javier to kinda give us a little, I mean, if we took as long as we did on agenda item, whatever that was, on autopsies, I think this deserves a little bit of time. I think that it deserves time enough to make sure that the folks directly impacted by this action understand and get an explanation of what we're doing.
Yes, Commissioner, on locations five and six, those were bid out, as you recall, in a package of RFPs. It was seven locations. And five and six are beach rental concessionaires. And when we bid those out, there was the disparity on the number of years that came in. You know, they had, some of them were three, five, ten, twelve years. So the committee met, they reviewed them, and they wanted some uniformity to, as far as the terms of these concessions and if that would amount of annual base rent was gonna change. So what I did was, the committee asked that I contact the concessionaire or the bidders, or the proposers, I guess I should say, and see if those amounts would change, if the years would change. So when I made my first phone call and speaking to one of the proposers, I kinda realized that maybe we shouldn't be discussing this with them because it may seem to be, or people may consider it, I guess, negotiating with them before the award. So that was, we came back to the committee, and the committee says, okay, well, let's just go based on the information we get. So the committee made a recommendation, it came before the court. There was one of our proposers had filed a protest. And that allowed for the, I guess, the proposer to have a debriefing with the county and with the committee. After that, and discussions, and Mike can give you more information about that. As far as, I think after the briefing, she had submitted in writing her issues that she had. So after that, we felt, and I say we, myself, Mike Forbes, and Delvia and Richard, the best thing to do, the cleanest thing to do is to bid these out, these two that haven't been awarded yet, bid them out instead of submitting our request for proposals.
Mike, Commissioner, anything else?
Is legal?
No, that's what I was-
Any comment from Legal?
The two locations were under protest. The instructions to the bidders do say that a contract cannot be signed until, unless, if there is a protest going on. And so as this process went along, there were no contracts entered into as to these locations, these two locations. The protest goes to Mike Forbes, and he gets to make the first recommendation. And if the protester is not happy with that, then it goes to the auditor. And if the auditor comes back with a decision or recommendation that the protester's not happy with, then the final phase is the commissioner's court. Well, we're at the phase where it went to Mike Forbes. And I believe after Mike looked at the protest that was submitted in writing after the debriefing conference, Mike is of the belief that it's better to rebid these two locations.
And because of the fact that they're under protest?
Because some of the issues that the protester brought up-
Were justifiable?
Mike felt were, made the process maybe not so much illegal, but not as clean as it should have been. And he just felt that it's probably a better notion to go out and rebid these two locations.
Okay, I have another question. Will this conversations or discussions that you had with the people that protested, is that going to give them an advantage with a bidding in any way?
No, no ma'am. We didn't give out any prices, and that's what the bid is gonna be based on, is price per year.
In the bid format, the price, every, everything from this point on, if it becomes a bid, is public information. So whoever bids, if we go out for bids upfront, as the bids are open here, there will be public information, and whoever bids can then view the other vendor's bid. They can act, they can actually ask for copies of the bids before they leave this room.
Well, my question was, I wanted to make sure that the people protesting will not have an advantage because of their discussions. I don't know, I'm just asking you. In your opinion, they don't.
No, no ma'am. And it was, it was one vendor protesting, which was Mrs. Gentry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Tamayo, the whole debriefing conference and the whole protest only involved her actual proposal that she submitted. She could not ask any questions on any other proposals that were submitted, and so it's very limited. When we go through the debriefing conference, it gives the protester a chance to question the evaluators on why they scored her proposal the way they did. And from that point, what information she gets from the debriefing conference, she can then write her protest and base whatever issues she has in that protest. And that's what she did and submitted to Mike Forbes.
And as she protests, as she protests, Legal is present as well as the evaluation committee.
I just wanted to be reassured that that didn't happen.
So we're looking at not going out for RFPs like we did in the past, but going out for bids. And what are we gonna do in the future? Are we gonna mix them?
I asked that question last week when this was discussed.
With Delvia, she felt that bids-
From now on, it should be going out for bids.
And less problematic than we faced in the past. And we're, more than anything, we're just trying to find a way to improve our situation. We know this is difficult for the court. It's certainly difficult for us, it's difficult for the vendors. We've spent a lot of time and effort in this, and we don't need to have these problems re-occurred. So we're trying to find a way to make improvements and to make life easier for all of us.
Eliminate the problems, essentially.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
The other three weren't protested, just these two out of the five.
She protested on these two locations, that's correct.
And were those the only two locations that she owns?
Do I hear a motion? Of any kind?
It's a little bit awkward.
Yeah, I, it is, it's very hard.
Well, the, we either, we do or we don't.
So what happens if we don't?
If we take no action?
If we take no action?
Then I would have to notify Mrs. Gentry and-
But I didn't hear Mike.
I would have to notify Mrs. Gentry along with Legal, and then we would wait for next week's bond.
Right.
Which I imagine would be-
She would have to go, she would submit it to the auditor, and it would probably come back, whatever the auditor says, and it would probably come back to the committee record in the end.
So then it's just a matter of rejecting the bids is what she's requesting?
Right.
Not doing it all over?
It would allow everyone the same opportunity a second time, as well as possibly someone else that may not have submitted the previous time.
Have we already skipped one step? If, Delvia, you said that it should have gone to Mike, and then the auditor, and then to us?
This is Mike, this is the first step.
I know, this is Mike.
Mm-hmm.
But then the auditor, and then to us?
Yes.
And the auditor hasn't made any decision yet?
Not yet, it hasn't been sent to the auditor yet. Because she has that, Mike has to then, this is Mike's recommendation. If you don't go along with Mike's recommendation, he's gonna send a letter to Mrs. Gentry letting her know. If she's not happy with that, it still then has, then she'll submit it again to the auditor. And then the auditor comes back and responds. And if the auditor goes back to you guys to send, to recommend something, and if you do not agree with that, it goes back to her, and then she's gonna come back. The final is commissioner's court. And if you disagree and do not want to go out, and you think that the process was fine the way it was done, then the award that you made stands.
Are any of the parties with this item here today?
Yes.
I mean, do they wish to tell us something, maybe to enlighten us?
The Bronmel, if you'd like to.
Well, they don't have a problem, they're not-
They're the ones that it was awarded to. They didn't make the protest.
What's that?
They just participated, they're not protesting.
They didn't make the protest, they're the ones that were awarded the, well, I say awarded.
I think in the back is the people that protested.
Somebody here from Gentry?
I don't know anybody. I'm trying to make some sense of this. Is it Gentry who protested? Judge, commissioners, my name's Cole Bowers. I'm here not representing Mrs. Gentry, but in her interest, I manage her businesses. More observe in the meeting and find out what happened. I really am not prepared with anything.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe Mrs. Gentry wanted to be here, but her husband had surgery this week. I believe she's taking care of him up in the Houston area, so she couldn't make it.
Mike, so the people that had participated to begin with now will be told to rebid?
Exactly. And this time, I believe the actual requirements are much more rigid and well-explained than they were previously.
And the other contracts in the original RFP have been awarded and approved and everything?
That's correct, and we-
So the rest of the five, yes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the only reason why these are here is because of the protest?
Correct.
That's correct.
Which was part of the process of the RFP?
Which is part of the process, and it's stated in the instructions to the bidders.
So we don't have much of a choice?
We have to determine whether the proposal process was somehow flawed, and I think that's why we're here, okay? That's, it's really not that difficult to understand. She's saying, I'm assuming what she's saying is that there was something wrong with the process, and she's asking to, basically to avoid it and start over again, is what she's saying.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
So I guess you have a, somebody has to make a determination to tell us, do you believe that the process was flawed? Was there something that, from our end, that we did that was flawed, which gives her some, you know, some support in that? And only you all know that, okay? So what I'm hearing from you is that you believe, well, tell me what you believe, first of all.
I agree with what you're saying, Judge, and I do believe there was some flaws in the, in the proposal.
All right.
And I believe that's part of the reason now we've gone through a bid process. I believe that the proposal had several areas that probably could have been better addressed and fine-tuned in a better way to have all the vendors understand more clearly exactly what was expected.
And keep in mind that I don't, a lot of these vendors really hadn't, we hadn't gone out for anything in quite a while.
Correct.
Years, okay? And what we tried to do this past year was open up the process for everybody, okay? So you're basically telling us then that the, and the other ones, if we would have had five protests, we'd be doing this all over for the five, correct?
I believe that it would have been best to do it for the others. And I believe the only difference between this and the others is they chose not to protest-
Okay.
-at the time.
So in your opinion, as our purchasing agent, do you believe that this process was flawed?
I do, yes.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I don't think we have any choice but to reject the RFP. Because if it does end up in some kind of a, you know, legal issue, he's a witness, basically, for the plaintiff. So hearing this, then I would entertain a motion to, as much, and I don't think that, I like it, but I think you're telling us that the process was not what it should have been. It was flawed, some protested, so now we gotta move forward. Is that correct?
Well, the only issue there, Judge, is that there were three other contracts that have been signed and awarded already.
But there were no protests.
Well-
That's correct.
It was exactly the same process that was used.
That's right.
And it was flawed for one, it was flawed for all five.
That's correct.
But no one protested?
And does this action allow those that didn't get an award from the other three contracts? I think two of them had more than one bidder out of the three that were awarded. Does that allow those that didn't get a contract to now come and say, you know what? We were short-changed?
Well, and I would agree with you, but I believe that there's a timeframe-
You have a timeline.
-in which you can file a protest.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that.
So that, I mean, I don't know. I mean, the other option is, you know what, we just can't them all and go out for bids on every single one all over again. Because I agree with you, if this was flawed, then they were all flawed. So, but that's not, that's not on this agenda for today. If one of you all want to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to do that, then we better get with Legal and see if we can actually do that, because we have a contract in place. So, but that's not before us today. Before us today is this item, and we have to act on this item. And if we need to place something in executive session because of potential problems, then we put that for next week. And, but as of now, this is what's before us now.
Well, after hearing the recommendation from purchasing, I would move that we go ahead and reject the RFP for locations five and six.
Okay, does this move by Commissioner Ganso?
And solicit bids?
And solicit bids for approval.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to, and I don't know how many others submitted RFPs for five and six, but I want to apologize to them, because they're gonna have to come back and-
And redo.
And redo. And so, you know.
But we're just trying to make it fair.
I know, but that doesn't take away the fact that it's going to cause them more work.
Time and energy.
Time and energy, yeah.
I had a motion.
They're already even started to buy their inventory. And by the same token, Mrs. Gentry's had an ongoing contract. And so it makes it very, very difficult for us, you know, because either way we go, we're gonna hurt somebody. I don't know what the best answer to this is, but are you going to put up another motion, Commissioner Tamayo? Did you have something else?
No, there's a motion and a second.
Oh, there's already a motion and a second.
How long will it take to prepare bids and get them out? Because we've got the season coming up to us.
Yeah, and that's part of it, solicit bids.
Well, how long's it gonna take to get the bids out, get them advertised, give people time to respond?
The bids are due on February eighteen.
Due back to us, February eighteen.
We've had contracts for these two locations, right? Already, in the past. Would you mind giving me at least the last two years' operations on these two locations? If we're given so much time to, as far as year-end reports for what's available in regards to rents and in regards to concession percentages that were paid for them? I would appreciate that, Javier.
Sure.
Because all of that is tracked, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item sixteen, consideration possible action to solicit bids for the beach snack concession in Dwyer Park. We pulled item sixteen out?
Well, that went, you know.
No, I bet it was nineteen, just saying.
This is location number?
Yeah, this is, yeah, can you enlighten us on that?
Commissioner?
This is a new bid, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so this one shouldn't have been pulled out, really, unless someone wants to talk about it separately. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve item sixteen?
Remove.
Moved by Commissioner Woods, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item nineteen, consideration approval of service agreement concerning Cameron County Emergency Communication 911 District. My only question was just the timeliness of this contract, why we're approving it now, and it goes back almost a year.
I spoke with the sheriff, and he sent me to his 911 person, his name is Carlos Acevedo. And he explained to me that this is a training program that 911, the emergency board, wanted the dispatchers to be trained in all types of emergencies to be able to handle if they got one for, like, you know, from a fire and not just law enforcement. And 911 would agree to pay for the training. And if, you know, if one of the dispatchers had to go and caused the other one to have overtime, that's part of the money that they agreed to give to Cameron County. I went ahead and talked to Brian Janus, who's the attorney for the board, and he told me that what had happened was the training went ahead, but the board came up with the agreement, that they wanted agreement to have the county sign in order to pay for the training, and they approved it in December, and they just got- And they approved it in December and they just got it to us.
So we got to approve it retroactive back to May?
Right. So that we can get paid for the training that they've already taken.
Okay, is this just a one-shot deal?
It's a one-shot deal right now. They're looking at maybe doing it again.
Okay. So there's, so there's no term on this contract?
There's no what?
There's no term?
It's supposed to end at the end of this March, of March. But I, I've spoken to Brian and Carlos Acevedo and they said all the training has been done. And so the board is just waiting for this to be signed so they can pay Cameron, reverse Cameron County.
Judge, the only comment I have is on my backup information for this item. I was missing page one, three, five, seven, possibly nine or 10. It was an incomplete document.
Yep.
And I just checked with Commissioner Tamayo and she also has an incomplete document.
Mine is incomplete as well. That's why I asked you what the term was because I didn't see the term anywhere on here.
I'd like to see a contract, you know?
This, this was on, I believe, last week.
Yeah, but it was incomplete.
No, that, last week was, yeah, last week was complete, but the dates were all squarely. Here, this is the explanation with that. Can we, um, do you want to approve this subject to that? Or you just want to table it for another week and bring a complete document?
I'd like to have a complete document.
Yeah, but no, but no one got it.
None of us got it.
Okay, let me ask them, let me ask again. Let's table this item and bring a complete document for the next, for the next meeting. Hear motion to table? Moved by Commissioner Benavides, signed by Commissioner Agatha, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Uh, item twenty-two, budget amendments, line item transfers and our salary schedules. Javier?
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, uh, I left some budget amendments, uh, in front of the review earlier. Um, just line item transfers between line items in several departments. Uh, if you have any specific questions related to.
Are there any questions on item twenty-two? Do I hear motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Agatha. Do I have a second? Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Approval of claims? Anything on claims? Anybody have any questions on claims? Rob, you have some extra ones? Do I hear motion to approve claims as presented? Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries? Please note my extension on, on those two affidavits that I gave you and I think Commissioner Agatha had your extension as well.
I have one extension on Lauren 00194558, I believe.
Item twenty-four, approval of minutes for January the eighth, two thousand and eight, and January the fifteenth, two thousand and eight. Have the court members had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are they ready for approval? Do I hear motion to approve the minutes of the eighth and the fifteenth?
I'm ready.
Do I hear motion? Next motion. Moved by Commissioner Woods, signed by Commissioner Agatha, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item twenty-five, consideration approval of lowest quote for the canopy structure for the security wall project to Bowman Distributing Company? Do I hear motion to approve the lowest quote?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Agatha, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item twenty-six, consideration approval of contract with Bowman Distributing Company for the security wall project? Do I hear motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Agatha, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item twenty-eight, discussion impossible action regarding the selection of a consultant for improvements at the Cameron County Port Isabel Airport? Do I hear motion to approve the, uh, the recommendation? What was the guy's name?
KSA engineer.
KSA.
And that, and that, and that firm got the highest, uh, grading? Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Agatha, do I have a second? By Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Last item. Item twenty-nine, discussion impossible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda.
Judge, Commissioners, I'll try to be brief. Um, just a couple of announce, few announcements. Again, Thursday, we've got the town hall meeting in West Loco on the I-69, um, Trans-Texas Corridor, um, uh, project. That's going to be in West Loco at 6:30. Um, we emailed some talking points and some notes to you all. Um, if you all need us to fax them or send them somewhere else, let us know. Then on February the fifth, the, uh, Senate Transportation and Homeland Security Committee and the Senate Committee on Finance have called this, uh, meeting, joint meeting to discuss the, uh, the transportation funding crisis. And, you know, what's going on with that and, and Techstart is supposed to be at that meeting, um, trying to answer questions, um, from the, from the senators, state senators. And, um, if anybody is interested in attending that meeting, we're going to try to attend, um, that meeting on February the fifth, some Tuesday. This morning, Pete got a call from, uh, GSA, the administrator. Um, and they're trying to, trying to, um, fund some projects, um, trying to get rid of money, I guess. Uh, and so they asked if there was any projects that we had going on where we could use some money from GSA, General Services Administration. And so, um, we, we, uh, put together a letter. You know, we're working on the West Rail project and we need some money for the customs facility that is going to be, uh, going to be at that location. It's, it's a small facility because it's going to be for rail, you know, to, uh, staff the, the customs personnel at the rail bridge, but it's a significant, you know, amount. So we sent them a letter today, the judge sent them a letter today asking for about a million dollars. And hopefully, um, we'll get some positive feedback on that, um, for funding the customs facility at the West Rail relocation project. Um, this Thursday is the deadline for, um, Homeland Security to start implementing their ID requirements at the international bridge crossing. Um, they're going to be asking for two forms of identification for everybody coming across or going, you know, coming across into the, the states. And so, you know, we urge everybody to, you know, make sure they have two forms of identification when they're crossing and going across. Now you're going to end up staying on the other side. Or a passport. Um, and where, where, um, Public Works are sign technician?
Just one with a passport?
Right. If, if, it's either, it's either two forms of identification, a birth certificate and driver's license, or if you have a passport, then that's, that's good.
That's enough.
Now, for the first sixty to ninety days, my understanding is that they're going to be flexible. Uh, obviously, people are not going to be aware, um, and so customs is going to be flexible. After that timeframe, um, if you don't have two forms of ID or your passport, then you're automatically going to be pulled over into secondary for a detailed inspection and you're going to have to prove that you are a US citizen.
My answer to that is not go to Mexico.
Yeah.
That's not good for the bridge system.
No, it's not. And I was just going to say that our sign technician is putting, helping, put up signs, making the citizens aware going into Mexico that they need to have two forms of identification. We're trying to help expedite and alleviate as much problems as possible on our end.
Pete, the person that has that, uh, sign, that big sign out there, um, Mr. Carpanas?
Mm-hmm.
Is that who it is? Can we not start putting that out, uh, so people that are crossing?
Great idea, yes. We'll do, we can do that.
Just so they can start being aware of what's going to be coming down? I mean, really and truly, a lot of publicity has been given to them. But you know how some people leave it to the end. But if we could get him to start putting that up, that would help.
And I've met, um, I've met with Brownsville and Harlingen and, and I'll meet with San Manito and just advise them that, you know, from what we can project, our revenues are, are going to continue to decrease. So just put them a notice because I know that they also budget their bridge revenues just like we do. So, um, so that I've, I've met with Brownsville and Harlingen and, and I'll meet with City Manager of San Manito later on this week.
And then the last item is just a reminder, we're also, we've got a travel item for the binational in Ocaso, which is, uh, February the 12th and the 13th. We'll do a presentation on that for two projects, the West Rail and the Veterans Bridge.
Keep in mind that if, if we're going to have more than three or more members to go, that we, we have to post it. So I just need to know.
I, I also passed out a, a list of projects that we started to put together, um, for this coming year. And, um, these are some of the projects that we submitted in the past. Um, and in the Brownsville area, Harlingen area, and San Manito area. And then a couple of the other, other projects with regards to the realignment of the Gulf Intercoastal Waterway and the Levy Project and then our Veterans Hospital. Um, I know there's other projects that I'm going to include in here that Commissioner Tamayo has given me, given me a list of, of roads she wants. So we're going to, we're going to look at that and try to include as many as possible. Um, if there's any other projects that we've got out there. In the past, we've included the, the border interoperable communications network. I, I don't have that in here, um, but we can include it. You can always ask for money on that. Need to get an update on where we're at on that, uh, system. And I don't have the Los Fresnos project. We just got 250,000 this last appropriation cycle. So we're at about 500,000 for them, so. And if, if you want, we can include that as well, um, this coming year.
David, I submitted the list to you.
Yes, I am, I am.
Any questions?
These are projects that we submitted last year.
The only other one was the, the realignment of the, of the intercoastal waterway.
Yeah.
Remember that we've worked on in years past? And we've gotten some funded?
Yes, it's in your, um.
Is that the DEI?
Supported you, right.
Okay, that's the, okay, so that's.
We had a meeting, um, last week with Mr. Friedman.
Right.
And, um, the Corps of Engineers has been, um, developing some ongoing studies with regards to what's feasible with, uh, the realignment of the channel, whether you can go straight into the, uh, navigation channel or if you need to go, go the current route, which is through the Long, Long, um.
Long Island.
Long Island area.
Have we utilized all of the monies that had been allocated already for the work that was to be done?
Yes, the studies, yes.
Okay, the studies are all done. So now it's just a matter of determining which way to.
Right, the recommendation, um, we believe the recommendation of the Corps is not what the community wants. The, the recommendation of the Corps is to continue, is to widen the channel and to continue going through the same area. But the community wants to, uh, realign the channel and go straight into the chan, navigation channel and, and then take a left, take a right into the, uh, VND. So we're going to work with them on, there's a couple of issues that they brought up at the meeting we had last week with the judge. And we're going to work on that with them to, to make sure that we're addressing, first of all, supporting their issue and then, um, working on the bridge structure that they have there. Um, and working with Techstart, Mario Jorge was in our meeting. And, uh, we're going to be working with him to try to figure out how to best, uh, look to either replace that bridge, take over that bridge, or find another area where we can build a, a bridge.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge Mr. Garcia's report?
And just, this is a working document, you know, I'll be adding projects. Um, this is what we had last year. And so if there's any, you know, any other projects that you all have, let us know.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Agatha. Any further discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Do I hear motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second? By Commissioner Agatha, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? God save this honorable court.